I thought he watched it like that anyway.
Welcome to the November 12 school board meeting.
Dinner.
Please rise for the potential agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No revisions to the agenda, right? No revisions or anything? Summary of non-public actions from October 16th. Definitely wasn't October 16th. Was it October, November 2nd? November 5th?
Is that still on there? October 6th. It keeps reverting back to that. Should be October.
I think that's the date we sealed the minutes. Oddly enough.
There's something wrong. It keeps reverting to that.
Actually, wouldn't be the 5th. It would be tomorrow's the 13th, so it's the 6th, right?
Yes, November 6th.
Okay. Summary of non-public actions from November 6th. Mr. Miller made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of October 30th as amended. Mr. Leyva seconded. Motion carried 401 with Mr. York abstaining. Assuming there's no presentations?
No, but I am hoping that we can extend an invitation to our PSAT high scores who are merit, not finalists, honorees.
The three of them there?
Group of three students in for recognitions. And shortly after that, the concert, CHS Concert Choir. And we're going to also reach out to the elementary and middle school for some recognition there as well.
Any correspondence? I don't see any. Approval of draft minutes from 11-6-13.
I don't see anything on that red form, so. Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Let me see. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries 5-0. Committee of the forum? Superintendent's comments?
Just wanted to send out a thanks to the GMS staff. We had a glitch today with the power outage. It occurred sometime before this morning and the power, we became aware of it when folks first went to the building in the morning. It's too late to cancel the bus runs. People have already left and kids are committed to getting on the bus. The temperature was in the low 60s by the time we were able to get there. I took the call and it was just before 7:00 in the morning when Scott called me, the principal at GMS. We got there. Turns out, it was a blown line. They have three lines in for just over 600 volts of power, so when you have one of those lines off, it meant the boilers were not running and lights were doing strange things. Shut everything down. PSNH was contacted. They got there quickly. I'm not saying it'll happen every time, but they got there quickly, solved the problem. There was a squirrel at the bottom of the pole where we had a blown-out fuse, so we're believing that it was just an, you know, an act of sabotage gone wrong. But I do want to thank the teachers and the staff at GMS for hanging in this morning. It was a chaotic start to the day. We had a lot of unanswered questions and they came in. They were welcoming and friendly as always with the students. You know, people were up and going and running. It wasn't very long into the day before, you know, the power is back on and the heat was back on and we were able to do some things. And I was going to send them a congratulatory thank you very much, much appreciated, except the email wasn't up and running, so I couldn't send that to them. So this is my message to them now. Email should be on in the morning. There will likely be a delay in the printing and sending home of the report cards at GMS. We're not quite sure. I suspect that it will be Thursday, not tomorrow, because teachers will need time to input because they couldn't do that today. So please be patient with that. And again, thanks from me and the rest of the folks at the SAU office for your flexibility, your patience, and your good work today.
School board comments? Committee reports? Anything from the budget committee?
Yeah. Adam or Andrew sent me a few emails. I told Michelle they'd like seven hard copies of the budget broken down like you guys did last year where it's operational budget and then salaries. It's not all one.
Each one.
Each one. And the other thing, can you, Bill, they sent me another email. They'd like the enrollment report, the latest enrollment report, so that could be like on the front, you know, page one or something like that. And you guys, and also, we have something today that is the budget summary. That's like the six-pager. We have that also as part of the, in the front of the budget, so that they can just get a quick idea of 12, 13, 14, and then where changes whatever in whatever the lines were without getting behind the details. And I think that would, and if you'll send it to me, I'll print my own copy out. And if we go through there, is anything else that we talk about that we think needs to be added for the budget committee to back up the decisions that the board has made and the superintendent's made, then we may want to add that information into the, into the thing. They're looking for a hard copy on Thursday when they come to budget meeting, so.
This Thursday?
This Thursday. So I'm hoping that you guys can get, get that completed for them. If not, they'll have to come in.
Great direction tonight from your folks.
Have to come in on Friday or Monday to get it, but.
Can you ask them what their copy budget is for the year?
They have no budget.
Excellent. Enrollment report?
I can bring that to them on Thursday.
Yeah.
Essentially, status quo. The pre-K numbers are, I don't know if there's any students in process for identification, but that number's essentially the same from last month to this month. Overall, 1437. High school is up one. Elementary is down one. Last year, we did see some marginal incremental growth, but if you remember, a lot of that was in pre-K, which means identified students and some normal peers. So, you know, while we are hoping that numbers climb up to help us with our adequacy aid during the year, you know, the good news is that pre-K is, at least for now, stable. We do expect that number to go up as the year goes on.
Excellent. And the technology report for October?
What are the issues with mealtime? The mealtime issues at a high level? What's the issues?
Honestly, don't know, but it's, they're having problems with it. From our tech person who, last time he chatted with me about it, said we're going to, we're going to need to make a considerable contribution to fix mealtime. So to the, to this extent that I understand the specifics, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Hmm, okay.
Seems to be running okay.
I mean, I've had to use it for my kids a couple of times to replenish. I haven't had any issues with it.
Hmm, okay.
I don't know exactly. I've gotten the corresponding emails back and forth with it, so I don't know.
It was more in September and I really haven't heard much about it yet. And there wasn't anything in the budget for next year, so I'm assuming.
But it's not our plan, software. Isn't it someone, is it our software? Mealtime, isn't it somebody we contract to to handle?
Yeah.
Because they get a fee every time you deposit money. They're getting a fee on top of that.
34%.
Is, I guess, where they're making whatever money they're making on their software.
Yeah.
Not for me. I deliver a check. Second, I pay a fee.
Okay, if there's no questions on that, the VA report, do we have that?
I do not.
Okay.
You're working on the budget?
I was putting a little work today in on the budget.
That's probably his report. It's been budget month.
That works for me. All righty then, the impact fee request letter?
Yes.
It should be. I expected a little bit more detail than that, Dr. Cochran.
That's.
Or is that coming?
It's intentionally somewhat vague. We're basing it on the last couple of proposals. And it's, we don't really want it to be vendor-specific at this point in time. We've had two different people come in and have conversations about what it is that we should be doing, what they, what they're suggesting. And we went with what we thought was the better value proposal. If it's the board's wish, we can put some more specifications around that. Not down to the level of vendor-specific, but in terms of an increase of numbers of cameras and more specificity about what it is we're looking for. We could have that quite easily for the next board meeting.
Well, how do you, how are you going to present this, or how are we going to present this to the selectmen? Because they're going to want detail, they're going to want a little detail on that before they vote up or down on the impact fees. I don't know if this is enough information that will get them a vote of yes or no.
Yeah, that's why it's here tonight, just to, you know, to see whether, I mean, that to me was one of the main things we were looking for. What's the level of detail that's expected in terms of, I don't know what was in, for example, in the last proposal that the town approved, the extent of the detail.
Well, that one was easy. We gave them the price of the trailers.
Portables, yeah.
Portables, and that was.
No, no, I meant the one with the gas station. What was the level of detail?
I think they had a, I think they had a proposal.
Did they? Okay.
You may have to call, you may have to call Jason and ask him.
I can do that.
I didn't see the minutes.
My understanding was that it was essentially a scope of work with a maximum figure.
Yeah, I don't know how they handled the, the rec commission handled those fields, because I don't think they had.
Oh, you're right. They probably didn't. They just, they just encumbered the whole set of dollars and then worked inside of that as dollars.
I think they had like, they had a rough ballpark number and then.
I mean, that's, that's the assumption we're operating on.
You may need to ask Mr. Hope, Jason Hope on that.
I mean, so two things. We can start putting some around that, how many cameras, what are the locations, you know?
I hope you need locations, but you may need to, you may need, you may need to say we're going to add X amount of cameras to CHS, X amount of cameras to this, we're going to go, we're going to switch into this type of a phone system, you know, XYZ, voice-over IP, whatever the model or whatever the faults are. We're going to need, you know, you know, 30 or 40 units in each building. We're going to have to build out a little bit, this, that, you know, whatever. I think, you know, you may send us some, and this may be enough, but I would imagine that the questions you're going to get asked by the selectmen are going to be a little bit more detailed, focused than what you have here.
So my question, I guess, is do you want to wait and see that before we ask to be placed on a board of selectmen agenda? Or do you want to try and make some, communicate with Jason Hope and we'll get the document to you before then? Our next board meeting is?
December.
December?
Fourth.
Fourth?
Fourth or fifth?
Our meeting? The selectmen would like, I think the selectmen would like to see us, I was talking to Frank about it the other day. He asked us when we were bringing it. And I told him that we were trying to get it for a November meeting.
So I know there was some new interpretation by the town attorney. Do we have buy-in from our attorney that this is an okay legal thing to do?
Yeah, I still have hesitations on that. I'm concerned that it may come back to bite us.
Will come back to bite us? Come back to bite the town, but it won't come back to bite the school board.
Well, that's the same as us. I mean, we're taxpayers.
Well, no, but the, but the, but the, our position is to ask the questions and justify the reasons behind why we want to use the impact fees, and this is how we believe, based on the law, it falls, and this is the reasoning behind it. They then say yes or no.
Who is they? I'm still concerned. I, you know.
I did check what we're, what we're trying to do against the approved 2009 to 14 capital improvement plan, approved by the town. And you should have a document in there with a link.
Yeah, I see, I see that it's there.
16, 17, 18 of that is the school-based piece. Item D, building security system improvements, where it's identified as necessary, install electronic security systems at both LMS and GMS. This will allow lockdown. That's security cameras also be installed in public areas. That's, the biggest piece of the funds go to actually something that was identified at that point in time as appropriate for capital improvement plan. The other thing is, is the town's interpretation. I've had some discussion with Gordon, but no official in terms of the interpretation. There are various opinions about the use of the funds. There are some towns that have gotten themselves in trouble with the funds. My understanding is, is that the trouble that they got themselves in was that they were using monies that were, in some cases, not refunded after the sixth year cycle, which will definitely get you into trouble. But I, based on the information that I have, my understanding is that money has been coming due on the month of the sixth year. Money has been paid back as appropriate. So based on the town lawyer's interpretation, based on the decision made by the board of selectmen, based on the fact that not just the, you know, the purpose is in the capital improvement plan, but actually, many of the specifics are in the capital improvement plan. I really think, number one, we've done, we've done virtually nothing to enhance security, even though in the last, you know, 10 to 15 years, the need for this has, I think, become apparent. And we hope that we're doing this for nothing, except to make sure that we feel better and safe about, about it when we send our kids to school every day and our staff. I mean, this is about staff safety as well as student safety. It is, it is something that really has become the norm. We are seriously deficient in this way. Most of it is about communication and visibility systems. There are some other spinoffs. You should be able, if you have external cameras, you know, you can monitor, and because it's, it's recording, you can decrease vandalism, you know, those sorts of things as well.
I'm not disputing what you're planning on spending the money on. It's just how you're getting the money. Is it going to pass muster down the road, you know?
As I said, based on, on the town lawyer's interpretation and the board of selectmen's action, it would appear to pass muster. If we'd like, we could ask for a legal opinion from our attorneys. I'm sure they're familiar with it. It shouldn't take that much time.
It's one of those things where you move forward and you just put it in front of them and you go for it. I mean, you know, inevitably, if they determine that since we now have the upgraded capacity to be able to do these things, that we, you know, we couldn't really sell these things. We couldn't even look to move them without even higher costs involved. You know, the, based on the, you know, the attorney's, town's attorney who could basically guide the town through the discussion of impact fees, they have said that the interpretation of this is not, it's not always based on the fact that you went from 500 people to 501 people. In this case, we went from an old antiquated infrastructure to an updated infrastructure that will allow us to add the security, add the phone systems, enhance the security of the two, of the three schools. And that's really why we're going to the town to use impact fees, because that's what the impact fees are.
I understand what you're saying, John. I guess, in my mind, I feel like it's one attorney's opinion, and I think I would feel better just at least having someone else say, yeah, I think he's accurate in that. It's worth the second set of eyes on.
My understanding is very similar to Mr. York's in that it can be driven by growth and the fact that growth drives the demand for the service, or that, that even if the population doesn't change, but there's a greater requirement for that service. So for example, if you look at, at GMS, you could say, well, we're losing students at GMS, so we must have lots of room. There's no reason for. But the reality is, over the last 10 years, the increase of services required for IEPs. We now have an OT, a speech and a PT person in that building, sharing one storage room so the school, so all I'm saying is because of the drive in the increase in service.
It's kind of a paradigm shift over what is the increase. And again, I guess I would like to, I would feel better to have another attorney look at it and say, yes, he's accurate in that. So that at least we've covered our backs on that.
My understanding is that with the change in attorneys, there's been a significant shift in advice to the town. And so I don't disagree. If we, we need to get, I think, a little better information other than, you know, if the board of selectmen made a decision based on X, we need to do our due diligence. What I hear you saying is we need to do our due diligence and feel good about it ourselves and not just lay it on the board of selectmen and say, this is consistent with what's happened before.
I feel.
Is that your understanding? Is that, am I?
Yes, I think it's the wise thing to do.
All right.
Rest of the board okay with that? And then add a little bit more information to the.
Well, the issue, the issue is that the, the school's attorney isn't, isn't experienced in this part of law, because they don't deal with, school attorneys don't deal with impact fees. It's not their expertise. It's an expertise on the town side. And while we're relying on the town, and they are, they should have the citizens' best interests at heart through this whole process, and they're getting the guidance. So, so the question I have is, so we go to our attorney and we ask our attorney what his thoughts of this is. And his thoughts are, well, I don't, maybe you can do it, maybe you can't do it, I don't know. Because in retrospect, that's all he can say.
We'll recommend another attorney.
Yeah.
Or recommend another attorney, but, but.
I'm sure that has expertise in that field.
The, well, the town's attorney has an expertise in this. It's not like it's a guy that just hung their name out on the shingle today.
Yeah, but he's just one guy in.
Well, it's not. It's a firm. It's a firm that is doing it, but yes.
I mean, the most likely.
The town is very comfortable in the explanation and the direction that they've been given. They are very comfortable. They are not, if they have an issue with it, then when the school board goes to present it, then the school board members at that time should come and address the, the selectmen and say, why are you doing this? I mean, again, to get an opinion that says they agree or disagree is irrelevant of where this board should go with this. The board, whether our attorney says no, should not stop this board from moving forward with it. Because we have an attorney that represents the town, that has control of this budget, that has said, you guys should bring this to us. And that's what we do. We take it to the governing body and let them make a decision, of which we, which school boards have done numerous times to this, to the selectmen. And sometimes they've been told yes, sometimes they've been told no. But the selectmen have taken what they've been given and said, this is the interpretation that we, that we see now. At which point in time it becomes a debate between a homeowner and the selectman. If there's an issue.
The most likely situation is that the lawyer will come back and say, as with almost all legal issues, there's a range of legal opinions and they range from here to there.
And we, we got a letter from, you sent out the letter. I mean, we got the ruling from the attorney of the town in an email over the summer that got sent out to all the school board members that sort of justified and gave reasons behind the change at that time.
Do we need to, so the board still wants to see changes to, more information on here, right, before we bring it to?
Yep.
Okay. So say, this comes back on December 4th, do we just need a vote of the board to send it to the town?
Yeah, the board needs to decide whether or not they're going to move it to, to the board. But understand that as we continue to go through the process, the longer that we drag that process out, the less funds you're going to have at your disposal.
On the, on the detailed part, I will work with Kyle. I'll meet with Kyle in the morning and we'll start working on the, the more detailed documents
Okay. Tech integration specialist teacher?
Do we have a consensus from the board about the second legal opinion?
I vote no. If you're asking my vote, I say move forward.
Well, I just need some directions.
You feel comfortable moving forward?
Yeah. I mean, like John was saying, the attorney specializes in this, so. And they represent the town.
I'm used to being the odd judge.
Well, I mean, Derek, if you think that that needs more work, then we'll just hold the, hold the thing until Dennis walks back in and, and we'll have another discussion and see where he, what his thoughts are.
So you're saying you want to send it the way it is? You want to wait for?
No, I think we need, I think we need the backup. But I, but I think the backup can be, can be supplied to the board, but we should be able to move to the selectmen and get on their agenda for whether it's next week or the week of Thanksgiving or the Monday after. I just don't know what their schedule is. And, and it may be that next week is not quick enough. If they're supposed to meet next week, it may not be quick enough, that we may want to go. But I don't think we want to wait till the 4th, because that, they meet, I think they meet on the second and fourth Mondays is where I believe their schedule is.
It's going to be next Monday then?
And would be, yesterday, I think, was the second Monday. So it puts us on the, on the fourth Monday. So, and if we go to December, we may not be able to get on their schedule because they may have already set their agenda for their meeting for that far. So that then puts us into Christmas.
No, I say it's good. Move forward from here, get more of this information and.
I think we want to try to be their, part of the meeting. If it is the week of Thanksgiving, we ought to try to be part of that meeting.
What are you going to put in there? Are you just going to put costs around each item?
I don't think you need costs. You need to put.
More detailed description.
Detail of what, you know, what the product is, what you're, what you're looking to add and how many of which, which that, you know, which you should have a general idea if you've gotten a number.
So the centralized, you know, each, each school will have recording capability with, you know?
You know, one page on each school of a description of this is what we're adding, benefit, and I think that's where you, where you want to be. I don't think you have to be down to the, the final penny.
I don't think you need to be the final penny, but I think that having to lump some $210,000 in a general description is a bit vague. Maybe at least.
I think that's what they had when they, on the fire station, so. It wasn't, excuse me, gas station.
Okay. Thank you.
Brian can find out a little bit more from Jason on Thursday.
I'll contact Jason and see. I don't know where we are in terms of the second meeting of the month, given Thanksgiving, whether they're on that week or not, but.
They don't tend to move, because they're on a Monday, they don't tend to move very
Okay. Tech integration specialist?
Tech integration job description.
Have you talked with?
The tech integration job description you want to do next?
Yeah, I'm assuming that would come.
I think I gave you a copy.
Have we talked with Scott at all about how he expects this to be integrated into existing curriculum? Would it be a new special? Would it be an additional class?
What we discussed was, right now, there's a four-day cycle for specialists. So, this would add a fifth day to the cycle. So, if you think of a five-day week, then this person would pick up two classes per day across the five days. That would give them, you know, if it's a 50% position, that would give them, you know, five classes of threes, five classes of fours, right, next year. And then an extra class a day for some of the other functions, the technology integration and tech support and that sort of thing. And included in that, two periods a day, would be general computer usage and stuff, as well as teaching the keyboard.
So, how would that work across each grade? If they're only teaching two, two periods a day?
It would be, well, two periods, it would average two a day. We would have, so if you've got, you have five-grade three classes, five-grade four classes.
So, it would only be to third and fourth quarters?
Third and fourth quarters.
Okay, through two, we'd still have the four.
One of the options might be to, you know, well, one of the options might be to, to try and do some, some other things with twos, once we get the other program up and running. Quite honestly, there are three computers in each room. And so, the bigger bang for the buck will probably be working with teachers to get kids regularly on appropriate software, whether it is a keyboarding software, so some of the students will, will be on it. My understanding is that, you know, probably the best-used computers in the district are the regular classroom computer, computers used as centers with, in, in some cases, teachers who rotate students through a regular basis with a schedule every day, that sort of thing. So, the, the only thing that's really been determined for, for certain is what would happen with the grade threes and fours. And then, there are lots of ways that we could use them in that other, you know, 45 minutes a day.
So, is that going to work with the schedule?
There's just a couple ways.
So, if the threes and fours went out to a five-day rotation, but the K to two stays in a four-day rotation, is it going to mess up the other specials? Or is they already, they have their time slots and it doesn't matter? Okay.
It does mean we'll have a little more excess capacity.
Yeah, because now GMAR music is going to have.
Down there. So, you know, yeah, so you've got two fewer periods with, with the loss of two classes. Now, that stays anyway. But that's also a conversation we have to have about, about how do we, we staff appropriately.
I think also, along with that, that the IT department should, should begin the idea of exploring what they would want as far as tablets or whatever for various classes and what and whatever. And ought to be something that the board kicks around in December for their warrant articles. If that's something that we're going to begin to look at with our technology for our students, that we should begin seeing the options of what we're looking for and how that will be, so that we're in a position to bring that to the voters also.
I have a question about the evaluation for the position. Is this normal for each position? It's like, it seems like there's no measurement. I mean, just evaluation based on the ability, effectiveness of carrying out the responsibilities.
Actually, I can, I can.
Is there policy that addresses?
Yeah, I can show you the evaluation document. For each teaching position, we have a multi-page rubric with each of the, of the criteria. The generic one for, for classroom teachers, there's a separate one for special ed teachers, a separate one for guidance counselors, and a separate one. But it's, it's essentially, frames out the criteria for the evaluation. And I can share that document. It, it is a document that we're going to have to revisit in the next short while to add a fourth rubric. Right now, it's one, two, and three, and we'll be moving towards one, a fourth category, which really is an addition of a higher set of expectations in order to get the, the best review. But I can send you that, that document.
Also, in terms of employment.
I think it's online in the curriculum.
It has it here as 187 days exempt. It's not a full-time position. It says, "For terms of employment, we have it as a contracted 187 days." It's not going to be that way.
It could be. It might be half-time every day, or, or some other combination thereof. Could be two and, two and a half days a week, full-time, depending on how we, we want to do it.
Well, does that give us flexibility in the position?
Well, the, the job description is a basic job description. In this case, we'd be filling it only a half-person. So, we.
Okay. So, that, just because the job description says it, doesn't mean that's not a position?
Right.
Okay.
Any questions?
Do we, as requirement, do we have anything in here that actually talks about background and experience in, in IT and, and teaching?
The two certifications that are required, there's just two different ones in the state. If you look at bottom of page two, State of New Hampshire certification. And there are two certifications that would apply, education, technology, integration, or comprehensive technology educator certification. Comprehensive technology educator certification is an endorsement, requires, you know, a fair number of IT classes and pedagogy. The newer one, the education technology integration certification, is a little more focused on working with teachers to help them implement. So, one is a little more balanced on actually teaching information technology systems, and one is on helping teachers integrate it in. But both cover the same basic core knowledge, and it's just a different focus.
They'd have to be a highly qualified education, elementary school, too, right?
No, not necessarily, because they're not delivering core content in the shore. But it's, it's not unusual for people to add either one of those two technology endorsements on top of an elementary. We have at least one person in our system who, who has that now, who is a K to eight elementary certified with this. So, it, it's actually, the optimal situation for this hire would be somebody who's initially K to eight cert, quality teacher, and then overlay this level of expertise.
Is this a new job description?
Yes.
Do we, so we need to improve it, then?
Sorry?
Do we need to approve it, then?
Well, I think before we move forward to the, you know, said we wanted to, to have more.
Yeah.
If we want to have a, a conversation. I haven't had a whole lot of spare time to create that since we've met last. So, it's a first effort. But I think it's, it's reasonably comprehensive.
So, I apologize if I missed it. How many other teachers report to the principal and to the director of curriculum?
Well, depends on how you see the situation. Special education teachers are evaluated beginning this year by both the principal and the special education director. It is unusual, but depending on how much this is straight teaching and how much it is facilitating other curriculum. And one of the things that we will be able to do is leverage this to work on the ICT portfolio requirement that we haven't met of late. And that requires K through eight coordination, which is one of the major reasons that this is in here. And quite honestly, Julie has, has done a lot of work putting PD together for this, and she has a group that's working, sorry, with teaching with technology. And she's also put a lot of work into that portfolio piece. So, this would, this would allow her to, it would allow me to make sure that she's involved in all of those conversations.
Can you create, I think, maybe a plan around that? Just so we can bring it, can you create a plan, plan around what you just said, so we can bring it to the, the Budget Committee? Just basically how the sched, the special system's going to work with the five periods, and then what their other responsibilities are going to be in the classroom with other teachers, and then what you envision them doing for the electronic portfolios? That way, at least we have a plan to bring forward to the Budget Committee when they question this.
When it comes to the Budget Committee, you want to, you want to present this when Scott is there as part of the GMS budget?
Yeah, that's a pretty good idea.
As opposed to?
Well, that's the budget it's in, right? So.
Technology.
When is he coming? In December? He's not part of the first budget, right? He's part of, he's part of the first meeting.
I think he's the second or third.
No, I think that you may want to save some of these additional, you know, just something that, that we add at the end.
What if we, what if we had him, had him speak, speak to it when he's there at the first meeting, rather than having him come back to the other one to reduce salaries and, and benefits at the end? That way, they've, they've had a, the Budget Committee will have had a conversation, been able to ask Scott questions about what he thinks.
Yeah, but I don't know if, I mean, I'm sort of like with Dennis, you know, thinking about, I don't know if, see, we're not going to meet till the 4th. Scott's coming to talk about it on the fifth, or the 3rd or the 5th, which is one of those meetings, which is a meeting that he'll be at. I don't know if.
Can you rearrange and have him come on the 12th?
Well, no, I think, no, we're not, we're not changing the schedule. But I think this is probably something that, that we could probably handle, you're at the superintendent's level and, and with the school board rep, and that came the conversation. Because I still think that we need to, I, I'm behind the concept. I don't believe it's ready for prime time yet. So, if we had to try to explain it to the Budget Committee, we're not adequately prepared to explain it and get it approved at the Budget Committee level as it stands today. And, and I would think that it would be removed. And I think if this is something we want to move forward with, because we feel that, that the decisions and the reason behind it are adequate, and, and we believe that the information we have supports it, then we need to do that. But I don't think we're, I don't know if we're there yet. I mean, I think you're going to have your work cut out between now and the 4th to get that all put together.
Has there been any history of presentations to the, significant presentations to the Budget Committee with rationales like this?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think there's.
I, I've done, for example, when we were looking at, at a position like this in Nashua, I actually did a 20-minute presentation to the board about the rationale, here's how it fits into the program, here's how we see this, you know, growing, and here's how it fits in the next three-year plan in this area.
Well, I think that may.
Would that be something that would be appropriate or inappropriate with respect to the Budget Committee, or?
I mean, I, I know when they've asked for additional police officers, they've always come in with a rationale as to why that officer's needed, what they're, I mean, if it's just a patrol officer, you list the duties. But if it's, if it's something, they, I know one time they were looking for a prosecutor.
Yeah.
So that the lieutenant wouldn't have to go into the prosecutions. They had, I know they came in and then they kind of got asked to come back with more justification.
I mean, I, I think that, again, I, my argument on this, I, I know it was a different vote the other day, was that, that this is a, a job description change of an existing position, with a reduction from full-time to part-time. And I believe that's, and then that's how the position is occurring. And this is the responsibilities in the job description, and this is how we think it ties into the strategic growth, your strategic plan, and the backing and support of what the school board has been tasking the administration to move towards. And I believe that's the definition that you have to, to, you have to supply. And so, that position needs to have some thought put on it by the, you know, by the IT people at LMS and CHS, helping to guide GMS and how they think that position should be laid out, and how, what's the best way to use it, and how they see it occurring. And, and it may be something that sort of occurs along with the whole process.
It's, it's on the agenda for a two-hour meeting that Julie and I have next week, a major catch-up and planning and piece. So, we'll, we'll start there.
But it does need.
Oh, absolutely.
Some, some backup on it.
That's going to be a tough road to hoe, because there's not a job description for a second-grade teacher that we eliminated.
That what?
There's not a job description for a second-grade teacher that we eliminated. There's a job description for teacher. There's no, there's not five job descriptions for second-grade teachers that you've changed one of them.
Well, no, no, there's a, well, there's a, there's a position, a teaching position that's been, that, that may be reduced or is being reduced.
Tell you that's a very tough road to hoe.
They're going to see it as a new position.
Well, I mean, we can, we can beg, great minds can disagree.
Thank you, John. I think that was a compliment.
You know, I, again, I go back to the same thing. If you look at the warrant, and you, and you go back and you research it, it said, "If you're going to add a position, a position is a position." It means you went from 10 to 11, not from, "These 10 people are doing this, and now these 10 people are doing this." That would mean that at any point in time that we wanted to change anybody's job description or position, we would need to go and ask the voters that say that we want this science teacher, that's a physics teacher, to teach chemistry and earth science.
So, John, I don't disagree with you. If you were taking a second-grade teacher and saying, "I'm moving them over," I'd agree.
Well, nobody says that we're not. Nobody says that we're not taking any existing position.
I, I, I thought I heard a discussion that there was probably going to be attrition at the second-grade level.
Well, no, I think the attrition was that there may be, because of enrollment, there may be a change in that. But in the meantime.
We, we cut a position.
We did, and we added a position.
I don't believe the expectation is that the person that is fulfilling whatever, that whatever person fulfills the position that was eliminated is moving to this position. I don't believe that's the expectation.
Well, you don't, you don't know what that person's qualifications are.
I'm just saying. You made the, you made the movement, and I would agree if it was a movement. If we, if we were going to take a teacher from 5th grade and say, "We'd like you to teach 6th grade, and you're qualified. Here's your new assignment." I agree. You follow the bubble up as far as you can go. I don't believe that's what we're doing here. And I, and I believe we're.
Again, it's, again, it's, it's, you're changing a job description of a position that exists today.
You're not. You're not.
Yes, you are.
You are. We're going to vote on a brand-new job description. We are not voting to change a teacher job description to this. We're voting to add a new one.
This is a new.
We're voting to add a new one. That's all I'm saying, John. And I'm preparing you for your road ahead.
Is that, is that not why you're not wanting to bring this to the Budget Committee right now? Because?
No, because I don't think, what would I bring to the Budget Committee?
Whatever you voted for, John. You voted for it.
Actually, I didn't.
You did.
I voted, I voted against changing the position, eliminating the position. I voted against that, but I did vote for this.
Was it John Kerry moment coming up here?
I voted for it before I.
You can keep your position if you like it. Is that what we're going to hear?
No.
Just like you can keep your insurance if you like it.
Yeah, you know.
I mean, Derek even said it. This is the new position. It is.
But it's a, it's, it's a new position in the sense that.
We're reallocating resources.
With our growth, we're reallocating assets, we're reallocating individuals, and this is how we're doing it.
I don't think you're going to reallocate an individual. That's the difference.
Okay. We can say, "This is what we have as a, opening as a position." And if there is a. is a qualified person, whoever that person may be, that fits that, what that position is, and they happen to be part of another process that occurs, then, then yes, all we did was do that. But since we don't know all the particulars on that, we can't make that assumption.
Okay.
Some of us can, but others may not.
He did say there's at least one K-8 HQ, high-qualified teacher that is also a technology specialist, so that person might want to do it.
Unless you're moving the position that was eliminated, you're adding a position. Think about it that way.
I don't know. What do you mean by moving the position? I don't understand that.
You have five second grade teachers. You need four next year. The Board voted for second grade positions.
Correct.
An elimination of one, unless that staff member, this is the staff member, says, oh, I'm gonna go over here and be the, whatever this position is.
Well, they can elect not to. They could elect, say, I don't want a part-time position. I'm gonna go out and find a full-time position.
You're adding a position then.
Or they could retire and then replace that person.
No, we voted to eliminate a position. It's pretty simple math in my book, but we don't have to debate it tonight. But you better have a position description before you go to the Budget Committee. And I think you have to have a defined problem that this is the solution for, which I don't think you'll have by the time you go to the Budget Committee. My two cents worth as a former Budget Committee, that's the question I would ask. Why do we need this position? Demonstrate to me the need for this new, this position. And I don't think you can do that yet.
And I, and I think that's sort of what I asked the administration to get its information on.
Well, I suppose Dennis, the only thing you can do is like hand them the seven piles of paper that they asked for because some of them don't use a computer.
I'm not talking about seven piles of paper. I'm talking about what's the problem that this position solves.
Well, I mean, the first one it's gonna solve is the fact that our 3rd and 4th graders who have to be able to, be able to take tests on a computer system because the district has decided to support that process, okay, so now it's our obligation, responsibility to make sure that 3rd and 4th graders can adequately use a computer and a keyboard to be able to take the test that we have committed the district to.
Have you measured whether they can do that or not?
Uh, we have not.
You don't know you have a problem.
Correct. So is the goal...
That's my, that's the point I tried to make.
So the goal should be, so the goal should be to allow them to take the first rounds of tests, and then we'll know whether or not we have a problem or not. Or what is the other solution to that?
I, I thought we were gonna pilot Smarter Balance this spring. And I believe you can probably find programs that measure typing speed that you could do in the interim and then come back in the fall if you need this position and make your case to hire the position. That's all I was trying to say last week is, I don't think we've demonstrated there's a need with data, which is what you're gonna have to have to go to the Budget Committee.
And that is what I'm trying to ask.
Well, I don't think you can get the data between now and December.
They're, they're gonna have to try if they're gonna want the position to be approved in the budget, or they'll have to wait or move it as a warrant.
Okay. School board recommended budget. So we're looking at the, is the second one the whole thing? All we really care about is the changes, though, right? The first document, number one? Is that accurate?
You have a spreadsheet that is basically the votes that the school board took last meeting, and you have the recommended, and I'll defer to some of this to Michelle, let me put this together, recommended change, voted change, and the last column is the page in the full budget where the change appears. Then you have on this, on the bottom of the page, the total amount of the changes in the net of the new, new budget as voted on by the Board last week.
What's the negative 13,096?
That was a, we found another one of those annualized summer positions.
Okay.
So after we put it in, we found that, we made that change, so it reduced the budget that was presented to you as a board last Wednesday by that amount.
Okay, so after all of our changes, we were at, what, an additional $100,000? Now we're at $110,000 less than last year's?
Uh, 116,698.22 to be exact.
It's a good place to be.
Did, Brian, did we not have a expected increase in special ed that we did not consider last week?
Oh, that's right.
Transportation?
Did we have transportation and...
Built in or not?
That was the email from Devon.
I'm just worried because we cut 36,000 and then there was like 25, we expected an additional 20, 25,000 more than what was in the budget, so...
I checked on it. It was there.
It is in there?
Yeah.
It's included in this?
It is.
That was, that was almost a $75,000 increase?
58,9.
No, it was...
Transportation and the school?
It was 33,000,060 for the tuition and 25,000 for transportation.
I remember we were specifically talking transportation and you said you thought there was 25,000.
And then there was some specialized services for 600 associated with that.
Now, what about other steps in here for non-LEA?
No.
No? So we need to vote on that?
That's the direction that I will need from you tonight.
Are those costs in the archive? We had those last week, right? Do you remember, Michelle? I think you'd given, you'd given us a spreadsheet with the cost for LEA salaries.
Non-LEA.
Non-LEA salaries. Those last meeting, I'm looking right now.
Yeah, I think there was, I think it was two meetings ago, there was a memo in there that the cost breakdown of 1%.
Yeah.
Uh, I can give it to you right now. A 1% for non-LEA excluding administrators, um...
17,952.
District, 17,952. That's a 1% for all non-LEA staff excluding administrators.
And a step is 35,116.
That's right, 35,116. And again, I think I gave you the summary that not all were scheduled. Some had maxed out here as well.
That spread total was 58,660.
Anything in there already?
All in.
Okay. I think we should just put the steps in personally. That's what the town does. That's what, when we hire these people, they...
It's the pay scale.
It's the pay scale, so it should be in our operating budget. We could talk about in the future doing a modified step or something next year, but I think it's too late for that, so just put the pay scale step in.
I'll make a motion to include the step inside the budget at 35,116.
Second.
This is step no call, right?
Yes, just a step, current existing pay schedule for not all, non-LEA.
That's what would be, it's what will be in the default budget? Movement for all those that are scheduled.
Yep, I would put that in the default budget.
I made a motion for, to add the step into the budget at 35,116.
No, they're not.
They're not in there. This is just, what levels does this go to?
This is for all non-LEA excluding administrators.
Okay, so vice principals and directors are not, are not included in this process?
Which they got, they got a raise last year when no one else did.
Administrators and non-LEA?
Hell, the non-LEA.
They got a 1%, I think, right?
Well, we did, we did major, we found we were pretty deficient in that, so we had to go and correct them.
I think everyone got 1% except for food service got 3%. I have a fair recall.
1% lowered down.
Huh?
1% was lowered down.
Oh, that was two years ago, right?
That was last year.
That was last year?
The year before was default.
Any more discussion on that?
So I made the motion to get it started, but I'm gonna abstain from the vote. My wife is an employee on the step scale, so...
Huh?
Did anyone second it?
Hmm?
I seconded it. Do Paris have, are Paris on the step scale? I mean, not Paris, Monmouth? I don't think they have steps, do they? Okay. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries 311.
I'll make a motion to include a 1% increase for administrators in the budget for 11,284.
Is that a flat increase or is that to be divvied up?
To be divvied at the discretion of the superintendent. I mean, this is, this is equivalent to the step scale when we put the administrators on a pay scale, we said.
It was 1%?
1%.
You get a second on that?
No, I'll second it. Okay. Give me a second. I was, my original got was to actually do 2%, but 1% was the original scale. I was thinking 2% just because they didn't get anything last year.
How many employees is that?
14.
14.
I was gonna say 16.
15.
The total, the total of 1% is 11,284.
11,284.
I was just wondering how many employees it would be squared.
It's 15 excluding superintendent.
Excludes, 15 excluding superintendent.
And you're on a contract anyway, right?
Yeah. I'm not included in that total.
No. I didn't mean to exclude you. That's the way they asked me last time. You give me...
Just give me the look.
I got the look. Well, you would ask last time, excluding the superintendent, what was the count? So...
15, huh?
The total salaries, 2014 salaries for the 15 employees is $1,331.31. That's 15.
I'll make a motion to amend it to 2%.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So the motion failed, the amendment failed. Okay, so now we're back to 1%. Any more discussion on 1%? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain? Motion carries 41.
You made a motion that you didn't argue for.
I, I, I said I thought 2% didn't get anything last year. Wasn't very convincing.
So now we went from 116 down to 105 and then...
35, so like 70?
7.
It's not so bad. At least it's red. It'll get redder, I'm sure.
I was gonna say. It's not burned black. I'm predicting a minimum of $23,765.31 change after the Budget Committee.
Of what?
25, $23,765.31.
Very specific line. I don't...
Reduction from the Budget Committee, minimum.
For what line?
The second line in our spreadsheet. PT, computer teacher.
I can have those changes out to the Board tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're at least, it's you.
Okay, well, I gotta get back to my packet.
Well, we need to vote on a bottom line to send it to the Budget Committee.
So...
Yes, we do.
So the bottom line, what was the old bottom line? I had to open a packet.
Well, it was 19,846,18378.
There is, there's a, one other piece to add back in potentially. We cut 19,999 dollars out. We have a much cheaper solution through my little diagram from today. Since the vehicles would be in front of the 1930s building, I thought the vehicle would be appropriate.
Oh, that's true. Do you want to reduce that by 15,000?
No, you guys already took the reduction of 19,999.
No, no, you want to reduce the reduction, which would therefore be an add.
Yes, to, reduce the reduction.
Two negatives is an addition, right?
$2,499, which $2,500 will cover that.
So I'll make a motion to add $3,000 to site improvement for GMS.
Second. Any discussion?
This is, just so it's clear, we can put in the minutes, it's for the solution to the GMS drop-off.
That's wrong.
We had a very good move. Mr. Pinciero, Mr. Lynch, Dave Ross, Scott, Frank and myself met today and we all felt it was, it was a very cost-effective and effective way of approaching the situation.
I'm sure for $1.2 million, we could widen 3A and relieve the traffic backlog that happens there.
Right, yes.
We get an occasional thumbs down about that.
How much was it? 3,000?
We do have 3,000.
People that turn left, don't go down and wait in line like everybody else.
Did you second that, Derek?
Well, it's interesting when the buses try, when the buses try to get around it on 3A, because they, you know, they have to move over into the other lane to get around the traffic. Not that somebody coming down 3A would want to tangle with the bus, but it is, you know, it is a safety issue.
Any more discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Did you vote?
Yes, I did, Derek. I was like, what's that one?
You gave her enough time.
Motion carries 57.
I think that's a very common sense solution to the problem that was presented, so...
So now if my numbers are correct, we added in 35,0116 for non-LEA, 11,284 for administrator, 1%, and then 3,000 for the barricade. And the new bottom line for us is 19,895,583.78?
Well, I rounded, 584.
All right.
But I'll give you that.
What was the number?
Good job. 19,895,584.
I'll make a motion for that number for the recommended budget.
Can we address the issues that we still have questions about?
No, we didn't. The Board had some questions from last week.
Still a few things. Were these reductions or these...
Well, they were reductions, but they wanted more information.
Confirmation.
And Dr. Hyon did provide information about the curriculum.
The curriculum software for 3958 should be on your...
Yep, I read that.
It's a, it's a pretty crucial, from my perspective, piece to try and pull together the efforts so that teachers are very aware of what it is it's supposed to be doing, that administrators can, can do teacher observations and evaluations that relate to a much more defined set of expectations. And it also allows us to make modifications and changes over time instead of having to wait six, seven years. As we become more technology-based, we're gonna have to have something that we can change and evolve over time as opposed to every seven years coming something because how we, how we approach it, the standards may not change significantly, but how we do it, which is curriculum instruction, is gonna change much more rapidly in the future.
As long as it's not 7,000 next year.
Have they used this software or gotten demos and stuff on it? Like, are they familiar enough with it?
This would be new.
I mean, is anyone familiar with it or is that just kind of...
Julie has looked at several versions and felt this best fit our needs at a, at a good price. Doesn't have the vendor.
Is that the only change?
That would be the only change.
We didn't cut it last time.
Oh, we didn't cut it?
No, you didn't cut it.
I just wanted...
Okay.
I wanted more information.
I wanted to understand what it was used for and what the rights were, which was all in the packet.
The K para, I think, you know, the numbers are not down significantly, I mean, one from this year. The chairs, they're game.
Okay, so our number's still 19,895,584 then. Did you get a second?
I withdrew my motion because I didn't think we were done. Are we done with the questions?
Yes.
I'll make that motion. No, I, thank you, Michelle. I appreciate you keeping us honest.
Second, there you go. Any discussion? I thought we had five hours of discussion last week, right? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Abstaining?
Why do you always look at-
I don't know, I couldn't, I can't hear you.
So we also need to vote on the food budget and-
Do them individually.
The non-public minutes. Last week was number six.
I'll make a motion for the two thousand fifteen food service fund of five ninety-four, seven oh two.
Second.
Sorry, I was talking, what was that?
Food service, five ninety-four, seven oh two.
Thank you.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five zero zero.
I'll make a motion for two thousand fifteen grants fund, three hundred and forty thousand and ninety dollars.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Does that mean that we have a reduction of somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars from last year?
Total.
Yeah, total? Which is basically right around where our-
'Cause you have your, your Fed funds, I think, is down over two hundred thousand.
Yeah, but I mean, but that, does that mean that, you know, basically, we've, the-
The budget will be down, but our revenues are gonna be down on, on the grants.
On the grants.
So that's a wash in terms of actually-
Your grants are a wash, yeah. I think total, we're down about sixty-seven thousand, so we ate up about three hundred of that.
Right.
The, yeah. But most of that, I think, was benefits, really, that we had no control over.
You will need a, you might need a detailed thing of that amount of money, that, that block of money, and how it got divided into the budget and things that nibbled away at that line item for the Budget Committee. Or not for them, at least for ourselves, so that we're able to articulate it. But I think it'll help if we can supply them with, um, for that, where that money coming back.
Just as a summary of what the big reductions were and the big additions.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least we're below.
Any questions on the manifest?
At least we're below. We go for the town side.
Oh, they'll come, they'll come back to level fund by the time it's all over.
No questions on the manifest? Public input. Right on time.
Once, once tonight's good. Jason Garrett, eleven Perry Court. Eric Newman from the real firm, real, excuse me, from the attorney, um, the attorney's firm Gallagher, Callahan, and Gatzel, said, "Impact fees are intended to draw a direct connection between capital improvements and the increased need for services created by new development." And the legal definition of capital improvement is an expenditure for physical improvements or costs for acquisition of existing buildings, land or interests in land, construction of new buildings or, or structures, or additions, and major alterations, streets, highways, and utility lines. Those are legal definitions in the state of New Hampshire. The NRPC has stated that, um, impact fees, that's the National Re, National, the, excuse me, National Regional Planning Commission, stated that impact fees and charges assessed against new development to generate revenues for the construction or expansion of capital facilities required to serve those developments cannot be used for the operation, maintenance, repair, alteration, or replacement of capital facilities. They can only be used to finance new facilities or to expand and enlarge existing facilities, which are substandard or under capacity due to the growth of those developments. The objective is to ensure adequate public facilities. Fees are not a panacea for generating alternative sources of funds to finance capital projects. And now, while I understand Mr. York's argument that, hey, that's not our problem, we should request them anyway, that's, that's ignoring due diligence in what the law says. If folks conspire to break the law and blame only the person who breaks the law, you're still guilty of not, ignorance of the law doesn't change anything, but i- in the eyes of the law, you're just as guilty as the person offending the law. And it's the job of this Board not to skirt the law, figure out ways around the law, or even, in my opinion, ride the fine line of the law. I want true, transparent, and moral decisions made. Not because we can figure out how to get around it so that we don't have to ask taxpayers for the money. Uh, we can use their tax money in a roundabout way, in ways that they're not even sure is legal or not. They, they just don't even know. And those are funds, those are taxes. Impact fees, whether we like it or not, are taxes on the homes that we've purchased in this town. And if, and if we, as a community, are due back those funds because boards did not properly account for and/or plan properly, that's no fault to me. And I should not be taxed twice because of a board's improper planning. There is no doubt, there is need of items and things to make education better, no doubt. But I wanna be asked for those things. I don't wanna be circumvented in some manner of, of nuancing a legal argument. Words have legal meanings, and those are the words that should be used. And as I stated last week, the standard in the state of New Hampshire, at least, is plain language. You don't create alternative meanings to words. They are what they mean generally to, in common people. And to do anything otherwise, to me, is, is just flat-out wrong. It's unethical. So please don't violate the trust of this community by trying to take something that is not, uh, that may be legal, but is not right. Thank you.
Um, do we need non-public session?
Derek? Just to approve the non-
Wait a minute, because Dennis was out of the room on this subject, as far as whether or not we want other legal to look at it.
Um, Trish had brought it up. Trish had wanted another legal opinion on using impact fees.
I think we should have a legal opinion from our attorney as to whether the request that is on the table is-
Is our attorney, um-
Our attorney or another attorney?
Qualified.
Yes, our attorney qualified.
I think our, I, I think you could ask the firm, and they'll have someone qualified, if it's not Gordon or Mike Elwell that we normally deal with. But I think Gordon has given us opinions on, um, impact fees in the past. 'Cause I know he, I know we've had differing opinions from what pre, prior town council said, and I'm pretty sure they came from the, someone in the firm, whether it's Gordon or not. That's why you employ a firm and not an attorney.
Can you forward him the opinion that we got from?
Yeah, 'cause I got a forty-minute commute.
The town with the analysis and all that.
Yeah, that way, at least he knows what the town's saying.
And he may, he, I, I think at one point last time, he actually called and talked to the town attorney, and they had a discussion. So, I, I think it's prudent.
Um, so if we don't need non-public, we can approve the non-public minutes in public?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes as printed.
Second. Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
I made up my hour.
You did, I told you you could.
Thank you, that's something.
That does not excuse you from going over the first hour.